Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to welcome you to the July 15th, 2013 Waukegan City Council Meeting. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman Valco.
Present.
Alderman Rivera.
Present.
Alderman Cunningham.
Alderman Conkin.
Present.
Alderman Moizio.
Present.
Alderman Beedling.
Present.
Alderman Newsome.
Present.
Alderman Tempass.
Present.
Alderman May.
Present.
I will one, Your Honor.
Please stand for invocation. Father, we thank You again for another city council meeting. We thank You for our mayor, for all of us, and for our city as a whole. We ask You to bless us. Now that somebody's here, God, bless our children as they go running and play. Help us to pray for their safety in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under Mayor's comments, I'd like the Fire Chief, Mr. Rico Faro, to come forward, please. Chief, would you tell us what's happening, please?
Thank you, Mayor Motley, and City Council members, audience. I just want to thank you for the time that you allotted for us to make this presentation. At this time, we want to acknowledge the accomplishments of some of our Waukegan firefighters. Recently, four of our members participated in the annual Fire Department Combat Challenge, which is put on by Scott. This was held in Fishers, Indiana. Now, some of you might have seen the Combat Challenge on ESPN. This is a very taxing operations and exercises that our firefighters from all over the world, they come to compete. The Combat Challenge, as I said, is physical endurance. It's a competition that it displays the physical fitness level of fire service personnel. The completion of this exercise consists of five rigorous life firefighting evolutions. And a brief overview of the exercises includes climbing a five-story tower with a high-rise pack, hosting hose line, striking a forcible entry simulator, advancing hose line, and dragging a 175-pound victim backwards 100 feet. The Combat Challenge is known as the toughest two minutes in sports. So I'm pleased to announce that four of our members from the Waukegan Fire Department, in the midst of stiff competition, they finished first place in the relay event and second place in team competition. That's worth a hand. At this time, I want to introduce to you the members of our Waukegan Fire Department Combat Challenge Team. First, we have Lieutenant Anthony Solar. Firefighter paramedic Al Ramos. Firefighter paramedic Nathan Skews. And firefighter paramedic Tom Clausen. Also, we have two members that are over 40 years old, and their minute was, their time was under two minutes. So at this time, firefighter Clausen, I'm going to bring you up, and you'd like to say something about your accomplishments here?
Thank you. For over 20 years, the Waukegan Fire Department has been represented in the Combat Challenge. We've had somebody do it for over 20 years. Many years, we've gone to the world, and we've finished as high as, well, a few times in the top 10 in the world. We continued this, this, two weekends ago in Fishers, Indiana, we continued a long line of dominating our Midwest competition, and we took first place in the relay, second overall. Al Ramos finished third overall in the over-40 category and earned himself a trip into the lines, which is a pretty elite group. And Nathan Skews also finished in the top five in the event overall. So we had, we had a good event down at Fishers, Indiana, and come October, we will be heading out to the world competition where we have, we're probably the odds-on favorite to win the over-40 relay championship of the world, and hopefully, we're actually going to set a new world record in the over-40 event.
One more announcement here. How many of you have heard or saw the WGN midday news where they have a segment called Lunch Break, where they bring on their top chefs in the Chicagoland area? Have any of you guys ever seen that? Okay. In August, August the 22nd, the theme for Lunch Break will be Firehouse Chefs. As the mayor can attest to, that firefighters are some of the best cooks in the world. On August the 22nd, we have one of our own, Lieutenant Tony Solar, who will be featured on a segment called Firehouse Chefs, and he will be sharing one of his healthy Fire Department recipes. August the 22nd. So I want to invite you all to support Tony by watching on the 22nd to say, hey, this guy's from Waukegan, that's one of our own, that's one of our finest. And if, if you're ever asked to come to the Fire Department to enjoy a meal, do not decline. Ask the mayor, he'll tell you. Thank you very much.
Obviously, you can see that we, as a community, have a lot to be proud of, and I can, I can tell you, attest to what the chief was just saying. I had the pleasure of having lunch there one day, and I didn't want to leave. It was so delicious. Okay, moving forward.
Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to deviate from the agenda and move the Public Safety Committee report up to be addressed right now, please.
A motion by Alderman Conkin, second by?
Second.
Alderman Moizio, all's in favor?
Aye.
Proceed.
Thank you, Your Honor. We had one item, we met today at 5:00. We had one item on the agenda, and that's to address the assault weapons and large-capacity magazine bans within the city limits. At this time, the Public Safety Committee recommends that the proper city officials be authorized to amend an ordinance to follow the state laws and not to adopt a municipal assault weapons and large-capacity magazine ban. ISO move.
Second. Motion by Alderman Tempass, second by Alderman.
Second.
Rivera, roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham, absent. Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempass.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Passes, Your Honor.
Passes.
Thank you, Your Honor, that's all we had.
Thank you. I'd like to entertain a motion to move the Finance Committee meeting up. A motion by Alderman Beedling, second by Alderman Valco, all's in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Valco, please, Alderman Valco.
Mayor, we met this evening, there was only one item on the agenda, and it was the authorization to execute an agreement by and between the City of Waukegan and Cristo Ray St. Martin. The Finance Committee recommends, an ISO move, that the City Council authorize the proper city officials to execute an agreement by and between the City of Waukegan and Cristo Ray St. Martin Work Study Incorporated, an Illinois not-for-profit corporation, for the purpose of sponsoring four work/study positions during the 2013/2014 academic year in an amount not to exceed $29,500, and this will come out of budget line item 100-10362440. An ISO move.
Your Honor, light, motion to the seat, Alderman Cunningham, please.
Second.
Thank you.
Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Newsome, roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempass. Alderman May.
Aye.
I'll pass, Your Honor.
Under Mayor's comments, I'd like to announce that on July 20th, the Art Walk will be held downtown Waukegan from 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. On July 20th, also from 5:00 to 9:00, there'll be a show, Zens, at the Urban Edge downtown Waukegan. Waukegan High School will be holding an event on July 20th as well, from 5:00 to 9:00. It'll be a student art show. All the students from the high school present their artwork. And it's a Carter Hotel, the former Carter Hotel, 405 Gallery Presents Americana, that is an art show, July 20th, from 5:00 to 10:00 p.m. at 405 Washington Street. The Chamber of Commerce will be holding a meeting for several chambers throughout Lake County, July 25th, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the Waukegan Yacht Club. We are a member of that and, and very proud member of that organization, I want you to say. There'll be a golfing Waukegan Park District, that will be July 26, 2013, and there will be an art and wine stroll at August 3rd, from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. downtown Waukegan. Entertain a motion to approve the minutes from July 1st, 2013?
Audience time.
Oh, I'm sorry, audience time.
Audience time, first, Your Honor.
I'm sorry. Audience time, David, at 2:20, Westmoreland.
Thank you, and good evening. On behalf of a number of people here, I'd like to thank the council for voting the way that you did on the proposed assault weapons ban, or assault weapons ordinance. I would also like to make a brief comment on that. As a Waukegan-born and raised, Waukegan resident all my life, I was very disappointed to see that that ordinance came back up for, for consideration. I would like to point out that I am very supportive of the enforcement of criminal law violations, and I believe that such an ordinance would be a moot point. Anyone who would be in violation of criminal law would be prosecuted under state or federal laws, and the ordinance, city ordinance violation would probably be thrown out anyhow. The ordinance would be simply a burden on law-abiding residents of Waukegan, and I believe that the ordinance would also be a potential violation of individual constitutional rights. I believe that it would be, open the city up to a lawsuit based on that, and I would personally be willing to be a participant in such a lawsuit, should this ever come up in the future. So I don't think the city needs any more of those, and I appreciate your support in our rights. Thank you.
Dwayne Gunn.
Good evening. Just have a quick question. My address is 1214 Fulton. Is there a plan to address Doug Dale Road between Lewis and 14th Street?
Mr. Haggerty, would you direct to address that, please?
Yes, we are working hard getting a S.T.P. funding for that. Order of transportation.
Thank you.
Your Honor, if I could comment on that? Since that is a second word, I just want you to know that I'm also working and had in talks with Mrs. Cunningham, who is our Lake County Board Representative in that area. She's also doing work with the Lake County Forest Preserve to try and get some sidewalks, to get them to give up a little bit of land, so that we can put a sidewalk in for the people that are walking up and down Doug Dale. So that is something that we are in discussions with, and we're hoping we can get everything worked out. Thank you.
Preston Kendall. Preston, are you here? Oh, I'm sorry, okay. James Zachary Jr.
Thank you very much. For the past 15 years, I've been a homeowner at 4544 West Forest Avenue in the 60085 zip code area of Waukegan. I'm an avid shooter and gun collector, and I'm a proud Illinois State Rifle Association Benefactor member, a National Rifle Association Life Member, and a Second Amendment Foundation Patron Member. I'm here tonight as a law-abiding citizen, a good friend, and a good neighbor. I resented the idea of this council voting to turn me into a criminal. I respectfully thank you for putting an end to this ordinance tonight.
I don't mean to, sir, but I really can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm a faithful voter who does not identify with either major party, and I stand ever-ready to use all available legal means to protect my rights. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, sir. Amy.
Thank you, and good evening. My name is Amy Chesney. I'm a resident of Round Lake, but I work here in Waukegan, approximately two blocks away. When I heard about the possible ordinance coming up, I had to say something. Me, as a female, I'm a member of the NRA. I'm a member of the Illinois Rifle Association. I'm an avid shooter. As a female of 100-and-so-many pounds, I cannot handle a 12-gauge shotgun. I go shooting constantly, maybe two, three times a week, with my husband. I have one of those so-called assault weapons, being an AR-15. I can handle that and shoot it 200 yards within a quarter pattern. If someone breaks into my house, I can take him out effectively with an AR-15. Ordinances like this, which are spread, are trying to spread like wildfire through the community, would disable my ability to defend myself and my home. The reason I can't handle the shotgun, again, my weight, but I'm also a cancer survivor, and chemo has affected me, my nerves are horrible, again, I can't handle a 12-gauge. I thank you for letting me be able to bring my rifle through this town, which I take with me to work and then go to the range after here. I really do appreciate it, and thank you very much.
Brian, 2440 North Kenneth Avenue.
My name's Brian Urbucheski, and I'm Director of Environmental Health for Respiratory Health Association, a lung health charity founded in Chicago in 1906. We focus on promoting lung health and preventing lung disease through research, advocacy, and education. I'm here today because air pollution is still a major concern, not only in big cities like Chicago, but also in places like Waukegan. Ground-level ozone, or smog, is a caustic gas formed from the emissions of burned and partially burned fossil fuels like coal, oil, and natural gas. They cook in sunlight and reach their highest concentrations on days that are hot and sunny. And by caustic, I mean that it chemically burns lung tissue, causing internal swelling as the body tries to repair the damage being done. Breathing ozone gas can cause difficulty and even pain when breathing. It triggers asthma attacks, and it increases the number of respiratory emergency room visits and hospitalizations. The fact is that ozone smog levels in northeastern Illinois are often highest in Lake County, not Cook County, and actually, the highest measured in northeastern Illinois are in Zion, only a few miles from here, where the nearest monitor is. That monitor has recorded violations of the federal air quality health standards 19 times last year alone. Fine particulate matter causes many of the same negative health effects of ozone. It worsens respiratory diseases, triggers asthma attacks, exacerbates chronic obstructive pulmonary disease, causes heart attacks, strokes, and cancer. Nationally, fine particulates cause about 10 times as many premature deaths as ozone. And though they come from various sources, in the Midwest, the largest source of fine particles is sulfur dioxide, which forms sulfate particles. In Illinois, 90% of the sulfur dioxide emissions are from fuel burned to generate electricity, and virtually all of this is from coal power plants. Air pollution affects those with lung disease, including those with asthma. Asthma is a chronic disease that restricts the ability to breathe, and it causes symptoms severe enough to warrant hospitalization and can result in death. Pediatric asthma rates in Illinois are about eight-and-a-half percent, so about eight-and-a-half percent of children have asthma. But in 2012, the Mobile Care Foundation, working with the Lake County Health Department, submitted a report on asthma in Lake County for school-aged children, and I'm going to quote, "In Waukegan, 32.8% of responders, respectively, had a diagnosis of asthma or presented symptoms of asthma through responses to the validated assessment tool." This means, rather than eight-and-a-half percent of children, we're seeing over 30% of children in Waukegan that are living with asthma. About half of that's diagnosed, and half of it isn't. There are many things that can be done in homes, schools, and in daycares to avoid the triggers that can cause asthma attacks, but air pollution is everywhere. Public policies are the key mechanism for reducing air pollution. Now, the largest source of air pollution-
Brian, I'm sorry, your time is up.
Okay. I could wrap up with one statement.
Go ahead.
The largest source of air pollution in Lake County is the Waukegan Generating Station, and given that there are very many cleanup delays with that facility, it's been delayed twice by the state, and there's financial uncertainty facing the company, we respectfully ask the City of Waukegan to call on the company to make its plans clear regarding the plan and to set a firm date for the retirement of the-
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Nick Burke. Pat, you're going to pass? Pass. Bill King.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak to the council and the mayor, and to the audience before us. I am very pleased of the action taken by the council in not passing a restrictive law regarding use and ownership of firearms. I own firearms, I do not own any weapons. I think that it's such a temptation to pass laws in the assumption that we've got to pass a law to govern our society, when instead, it's a matter of personal responsibility for which Americans are responsible and have built our reputation on. So thank you very much for what you have done, and I applaud your action. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ray Georges. Pass. Corey, is it Corey or Gary? Corey? Corey at 4480. Christine.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Christine Anaselli, and I'm a staff member with the Sierra Club, which is the oldest and largest environmental organization in the United States.
What's your address?
My address is 5619 North Winthrop in Chicago, Illinois. We have over 20,000 members in Illinois, and we wanted to share both our environmental and public health concerns regarding the Midwest Generation Coal Fired Power Plant that is on the Waukegan Lakefront. As Brian Urbucheski already stated, Midwest Generation's plant here in Waukegan is the largest source of air pollution in all of Lake County. They are the largest emitter of sulfur dioxide, nitrogen oxide, mercury, and carbon dioxide. This pollution contributes significantly to the health, to health impacts such as asthma attacks, heart attacks, premature deaths, and millions of dollars in associated health costs. In 2010, the Environmental Law and Policy Center issued a report attributing that the pollution coming from the Waukegan Coal Plant contributes to $86 million every single year in associated health costs. There is also significant water pollution concerns that we have. Every day, the Waukegan Coal Plant intakes 658 million gallons of water from Lake Michigan and discharges much of it back into the lake at very high temperatures that threaten many species and ecosystems in Lake Michigan. Just last year, the Illinois EPA issued notices of violation to Midwest Generation for groundwater contamination on the lakefront. Groundwater monitoring wells showed exceedences for several heavy metals, including arsenic, which is incredibly harmful to public health. Water that is also used in the coal ash handling process is discharged as well back into Lake Michigan, which continues to threaten the environment and public health. Right now, there are no meaningful regulations to limit the amount of heavy metals that are dumped into our waterways by coal-fired power plants, including the Waukegan plant here. So we've many organizations that are looking to address these concerned, and concerns, and build a healthy and safe future for Waukegan. The organizations have launched an effort called the Clean Power Lake County Campaign that is geared to build awareness around these issues, ask that Midwest Generation set a reasonable retirement date and transition plan for the site, and work with stakeholders to encourage new healthy development on the lakefront. Our supporters are listed, Most Blessed Trinity Catholic Parish of Waukegan, Christ Episcopal Church of Waukegan, the Exchange Club of North Chicago, the NAACP Lake County Branch, Cristo Ray St. Martin De Porres College Prep, the League of Women Voters of Lake County, Sierra Club, Respiratory Health Association, the Environmental Law and Policy Center, Incinerator Free Lake County, and many of the Waukegan art galleries here. I thank you for the time to speak, and I encourage you all to address these issues and work collaboratively with Midwest Generation to establish a reasonable retirement date and transition plan and future for our lakefront. Thank you.
Thank you. Abraham Avalos.
Pretty nervous. This is my second city hall meeting attending. I would like to thank the City Council, and especially the Public Safety Committee, for making the recommendation to, to pass, to take away the assault weapons ban out of the ordinance, to, you know, just to kill it. I really appreciate that. It gives me hope with this city that there's some people, and the City Council does understand the Second Amendment, does understand our rights. To put my two cents on this assault weapons ban and the high-capacity magazine ban, this would not affect the criminals at all. I mean, period. There's already laws where you take a gun and you do harm to another person, you will get punished, you will go to jail. The only, the only effect this would have been is to regular law-abiding citizens. It's just common sense. I mean, there's laws against stealing, killing, raping, anything that would harm another person. We already have those type of laws, and they're going to use whatever tools it takes for them to do it. This would have not stopped them at all. Otherwise, for you not to kill anybody, it would have stopped them right then, right then and there. For you not to steal anybody, to steal anybody, it would have stopped right then and there with that law, but it doesn't. There's some people in this, that lives in our community that will take, will do whatever it takes for them to survive, for them to kill, or, or, or anything, anything bad. So once again, I appreciate the City Council for taking away this assault weapons ban and this high-capacity magazine ban, and especially those three men at the Public Safety Committee, I thank you a lot, appreciate it.
Paula.
Hi, my name is Paula Carboito, and I'm the president of the Exchange-
Paula, what's your address?
2530 South Admiral Drive in North Chicago. Twenty-five thirty South Admiral Drive in North Chicago. Thank you. I'm the president of the Exchange Club in North Chicago, and I'm also a member of the Lake County NAACP. We recently signed on to the Clean Power Lake County Campaign, and I'm here to talk about some serious concerns that we have with Midwest Generation's Waukegan Coal Fired Power Plant that's located in Waukegan on the shore of Lake Michigan. Because we want what is best for our citizens, we would like health-conscious businesses in our community, companies that think of the public's well-being before its own. So with that being said, Midwest Generation's Waukegan Coal Fired Power Plant is polluting our air and our water. The pollution from coal-fired power plants has significant impacts on human health. A company should never knowingly expose its community to health dangers. It is both incomprehensible and unacceptable that the area coal plant ranks twelfth as the worst environmentally. As a working-class to low-income community, we're often dismissed into an unequal environmental burden, forced to live in an environmental discrimination which accurately identify what is happening to the citizens of Waukegan and North Chicago. One of the concerns I have is with our water. You know, this year I was planning on participating on something that the Waukegan Park District hosts annually, which is the Polar Bear Plunge. And then I realized that in that same lake, where plenty of people come out to enjoy a day of fun, individuals are jumping into a lake that is contaminated with arsenic, boron, mercury, and other pollutants. So with that being said, I'm going to choose not to do it this year. But I want to ask that we move forward in seeking environmental sound remedies that address the well-being of our community. Thank you.
Ms. Ortiz? Candy, what's your address? Ten, okay. Ten North Sheridan.
Hi, everyone. My name is Dulce Candy Ortiz, and I live on ten North Sheridan Road in Waukegan. And as some of you may know, I wear a lot of hats in the community. I serve in various organizations in many capacities. I also dedicate a lot of my time to volunteerism, and yes, I do have a social life, believe it or not. So my son and I live in downtown Waukegan, and I honestly can't imagine living anywhere else. I feel very vested in my community and work extremely hard to promote this beautiful city and all the amazing things that we have to offer. What can I say? I am deeply in love with our city. And in looking into the future, I would love to see a healthy and revitalized lakefront. But the most significant challenges facing Waukegan as we work to build a healthy and clean future for our city is the air and water pollution from the Waukegan Coal Firepower Plant. The Waukegan Coal Firepower Plant hurts the health of all communities in Lake County, especially here in Waukegan. The reason this campaign is very dear and near to my heart is because my mother and also my best friend suffer from asthma. I have watched them every day suffer from this illness. And unfortunately, my mother does not have health insurance to help with the costs of the inhalers, and when a butyral doesn't do the job, she's prescribed a stronger inhaler, which is Advair, that can cost up to three hundred dollars or more. She works in the service industry, and as we know, most of them do not offer health insurance, so she has to pay for all medications out of her pocket. The city of Waukegan is made up of fifty-four percent Hispanics and eighteen percent African-Americans, families of low to moderate income that don't always have access to quality health care or preventative care. Minority communities are disproportionately impacted by coal pollution, and the Waukegan Coal Plant here in our community is no different. According to the NAACP Coal Blood Report from 2011, it ranked Midwest Generation Waukegan Plant number twelve in its list of top environmental justice violators nationwide. Earlier this year, the Illinois Pollution Control Board granted yet another delay for Midwest Generation to reduce their dangerous sulfur dioxide emissions. Meanwhile, we, the residents, are stuck not only with the pollution, but also the prescription costs and hospital bills. Opportunity gets opportunity, and investments in clean energy and lakefront revitalization will make Waukegan an even better place to live and establish businesses. The Waukegan Plant stands in the way of clean air and water in Lake County, and our families deserve better. Midwest Generation has a duty to make their plan clear to our community, propose a reasonable retirement date, and engage us, community stakeholders, in their transition plan. And I would like to-
Ms. Ortiz, your time is up, ma'am.
Okay. Well, thank you so much.
Bill Osterling? Bill? Oh, I'm sorry, Ron. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I forgot who you were.
Ron Osterling, six seventy-four Maumon, Lake Bluff. I'm the executive director for the Waukegan Chamber of Commerce, and just one, well, couple announcements. You already mentioned in the mayor's comments about our next big event, which is the multi-chamber event. It's being held at the Yacht Club, and there's thirteen different chambers and all their members, about two hundred people last year, so we hope to have that many or possibly more. It's a great event. We'll have a steel band, the Steel Band guy is playing. He's a very entertaining band, and we'll have some great prizes. We have a yacht charter that we're giving away, or yeah, we'll actually be giving and raffling away, a yacht charter, a six-man yacht charter with a captain. And we also have another, the Arlington Park Prize, which includes food and six people at the park. That'll be given away as well. And then, that's July twenty-fifth, Thursday, two, well, about ten days from today. And then in August, our, every second Thursday, we have a business after hour meeting, and this one's at the Landmark Aviation at the airport. So that'll be an interesting event, too. Thanks again for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ron. Julian?
Thank you, Your Honor. The last time I spoke at this podium, I told everybody a story about a newscast that I had heard. On July the first, I had an opportunity to read the USA Today, and on page three, there's a four-column spread, Governors of Gun-Friendly States Rule Connecticut Gunmakers. And you can go on the internet, or there are ways of making copies of this. So what I told you was true. It's not just hearsay. So what do we do? I was thinking of sending our mayor to Connecticut.
I'll go.
You want to go?
Uh-uh.
Good. I have another idea. This is a publication called Shooting Industry. There are others. I'd like to see the city of Waukegan spend some money and advertise to the gun industry that Waukegan is a gun-friendly town, so that we can get the companies that are imperiled by the draconian goofy laws that they have passed in the state of Connecticut and that are driving good companies out of Connecticut, and out of other states, too, to get these companies to move to Waukegan. We need the jobs. When people work, they get paychecks. When they have paychecks, they have spending money. When they have spending money, they buy things. When they buy things, there's sales tax. The city needs to start collecting more sales tax. So we've got to connect the dots and get some of these companies that are thinking of leaving Connecticut to come to Waukegan, so the good people of Waukegan can get back to work. That's where we need to be. That's it. It's very simple. Thank you.
Jamie O'Meara?
That's it.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Jamie O'Meara, thirteen eighteen Chestnut Street, Waukegan. I'm here representing Waukegan Main Street, your downtown economic development nonprofit. The mayor stole most of my thunder earlier, but I'm going to repeat them, because you can never hear wonderful events too often. But I'm going to start with this last weekend. On Saturday alone, we had Scoop Unplugged, which was packed, live theater productions at Three Brothers Theater, and an amazing concert down at our lakefront at Steiner Pavilion. So anybody who has the nerve to say that there's nothing to do in downtown Waukegan needs to come and see me, because I will show them what there is to do. It's wonderful. It's amazing. And coming up over the next few weeks, next weekend, Saturday, is our Art Walk, our monthly Art Walk. And there's a new production starting at Three Brothers on July nineteenth called Misbehaving. There are our Tuesday Waukegan Band Concerts down at Steiner Pavilion, as well as Friday Lunch Concerts at the library. And again, Summer Saturday at Steiner Concerts, almost every Saturday between now and the end of summer. Check their calendar. And then Waukegan Main Street's Wine and Art Stroll is August third. We are not the sponsor of these events necessarily, except for the Wine and Art Stroll, but part of our mission is supporting our partners and bringing more people and more businesses to our downtown. So I encourage you, I encourage everybody who might see this on YouTube, and I encourage you to call your neighbors, grab your neighbors, come on down and enjoy the fun, because I can guarantee you that if you grew up in this town or anywhere in northeastern Lake County, you will see people that you know at these events, and it will feel like Old Home Week, and you'll feel like this is your neighborhood again. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Meara. Next item of business is the motion to approve the minutes of July first, 2013 Regular Minutes, and also the Executive Session Minutes. Please add that. Our motion by Alderman Cunningham, second by Alderman Beadley. Roll call, please. Voice vote, I'm sorry. Voice vote?
Aye.
Aye. Next item is the Special Public Works Committee Report. Alderman Moizio?
Thank you, Your Honor. Our first item is Item A, draft specifications and advertise for bids for the replacement of various water mains throughout the city. We will be using Frank Furlan of Northern Illinois survey for the design and plans for this project, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moizio, second by Alderman Rivera. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Item B, waive the bid procedure and reward the protective coating to the underside of the Grand Avenue Bridge to prevent concrete from falling on humans and passing trains. This does qualify for MFT funding. Funds are available in line item two-two-eight-nine-two-two-eight-two-five-four-eight-five. It is anticipated, actually, we put a limit on it, a cap of a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moizio, second by Alderman May. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman Valco. Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Passing, Your Honor. Thank you. Item C, grant permission to execute a contract for professional services with Baxter and Woodman Engineering for the Phase Two engineering for the Grand Avenue Superstructure over the Union Pacific Railroad for an amount not to exceed three-hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand. Using Highway Bridge Program eighty-twenty funding, with the city's share being a maximum of sixty-four thousand four hundred dollars, funds are available for this project in line item two-two-eight-nine-two-two-eight-two-four-four-three-five. Reimbursements from the state for this project must be deposited back into this line item, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moizio, second by Alderman Valco. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman Valco. Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Passing, Your Honor.
Item D, grant permission to execute North Chicago's request to divide the Waukegan-North Chicago Bike Path Project now into two separate projects. This makes North Chicago the project sponsor for their portion of the bike tech that is located within the city of North Chicago, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moizio, second by Alderman Conkin. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley. Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Passing.
And we might as well just go right to old business, Your Honor, because we already took care of the finance-
No. Are you talking about Swakow?
Yeah.
Go right ahead.
Okay. An old business, which came out of Public Works, request permission to discuss and join the Solid Waste Agency of Lake County, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moizio, second by Alderman Rivera. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
May I like to discuss it, please? Discussion?
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Swakow. I believe we've been removed from Swakow for approximately five years. It came about when they decided to assess us a certain factor of money. When we first joined them, I think it was twenty-five thousand dollars to join, and we didn't figure any assessments would be made toward us. We have a contract coming up, our garbage contract is coming up. With the garbage contract, we should maybe hold off and see what kind of bids we get with the recycle material, what the pickup cost will be, what would be the price if we sent it to a Swakow institution compared where the garbage contractor would like to take it. Right now, I understand, the last few years, I thought, I understand we had an agreement with their hauler, now that they lowered their price on our actual pickup of recyclables, that they would get to keep all the profits from the recycling. I understand Swakow did give many of its members a refund because they collected more money, but the last three years, the price has gone down each year on the recyclable. I notice Waukegan really does not do the job we should do on recycling. And I don't know, in our present garbage contract, the bids, I haven't looked at them yet. We need to look at the actual big carts compared to little bins, the cost factor, the pickup factor, every other week, there's some other items we really need to look at. And I think jumping into the Swakow contract immediately, I've asked my corporation counsel if he's reviewed the contract to make sure it's okay. I did hold it up last week, and it's up for a vote today, and I understand that, but I don't think we really need to be in a rush to go ahead and say yes, yes, because what are the options if you want to leave? If you want to leave Swakow, you're tied in. If they go some bond money, we're responsible for it. We're the largest city in Lake County, over ninety thousand population. The other communities come closer, about thirty, and yet, we have one vote, and a little town of a thousand has one vote on the board. I don't think the weighed vote, I believe a weighted vote should come into a factor there. Those are my concerns, ma'am, but yes, Swakow's a good organization. They've done a good job. I hear my Public Works Director telling me, well, what are we going to do with the TVs? Well, Swakow ain't going to help anymore. How are they going to get there? If we picked them up on garbage day, they wouldn't get the, if we made an order that you can't knock them and take the copper out, they could go to the recycling. There used to be one out by, out by the racket club there, Alpha Grand, where they would take them, but when they knock out the valuable part at the end of it, they don't want them either. So that's a problem. But that's my concerns, and presently, I'll vote no, because I don't have enough answers to my concerns. And I have a list I made out. Swakow's not likely to save the city money as complicated, and they're going to charge us thirty-seven thousand dollars this year. us $37,000 this year, no telling what they want the following year. Swakel, they rebate, but if we don't watch how our contract is read, it may cost us more for the contract than to pick up our recyclables than if we didn't belong to Swakel. And if Swakel doesn't work out this year, how do we undo our contract with them? So those are some of my basic concerns, and thank you for allowing me to speak on it, Your Honor, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Alderman Tempest, and I will say I respect your opinion. We have disagreed on many things, but you've never disrespected me, and I really appreciate that, sir.
Mayor, if I may, I really appreciate the job and the hours you're putting in. I mean, you're dedicated to the job. One thing I like about the mayor, he lets me disagree, and he hears me out, and then he makes a decision. And I compliment you for that.
Thank you.
Never will I ever try to undermine this body, never would I do that, but I'm very conservative in my way, I like to think things out. If I'm not for sure, it's a lot easier for me to say no until I'm sure. Even on the bike path tonight, Your Honor, that bothered me because I thought at one time, we were going to be hooked together, and now it looks like they're going in another direction. Okay, thank you, Your Honor.
Okay. Motion was made by Alderman Moizio, second by Alderman Rivera. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
I'll vote aye. And let me, I did meet today with Public Works Chairman and the mayor, and also our Public Works Director earlier today, so there were some questions that I had that were answered. You know, it is a one-year contract. City would get, what, 6%? Tom, correct? 6% would come to the city for the recyclables.
Whatever the market price is, anything over, whatever it is over 50%.
Right. Well, anyways, and again, you know, the electronics, that's been an issue, you know, as far as pickup throughout the city, so I'm going to vote aye. It is $37,000, but I'm going to vote aye. And hopefully, you know, if it goes well, and if it doesn't, a year from now, you know, we just don't go back to Swakel anymore.
Alderman Cunningham.
I wanted to vote aye, but I just want to be clear that the televisions is part of this deal here, correct? Is that right, Mayor?
Yes, that is correct.
All right. I know that's one of the biggest concerns, particularly in my ward, I think citywide, is having these TVs just being dumped now, as Alderman Tempest said earlier, that they take the good parts out of them, they're just becoming a garbage dump, and I feel that, particularly on the southeast side of my ward, and I can't speak for others, but it's something that we have to try. So my vote is aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
No.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Passes, Your Honor.
Your Honor, another thing, now that this has passed, and with these television, is there some type of communication that we can get out, that we can let people know that they don't have to dump them in alleys, they don't have to dump them on streets and parkways any longer, so we can get this thing going? I think Alderman Moizio has something to speak to that.
Yeah, we'll, I'll work with Mr. Hagerty to get something together about how we can make this system a little easier for residents to dispose of TVs, we'll have a bin probably at Public Works Fire Station, we have to flush that all out, to develop a system so that we make it a lot easier for people to deal with.
Thank you. David, I'll have my son David Motley, the new cameraman, he will draft that, so we will, we'll get that as soon as possible. New business recommended actions?
Real quick, I wanted to, I probably should have done this right after, but I want to, just real quick, I'm just going to touch on the bike path. All this does is it, at first, us and North Chicago were in a sort of a partnership with federal money to build this bike path. All this does is that by us severing the agreement, North Chicago can move on with theirs, and we still have to flush out some engineering things with ours. It's not setting the route. There was a little bit of discussion in committee, we're not setting the route of the bike path because there was three different options, one of them fell apart because we weren't the landowners. So that's what we have to discuss and get figured out, but this allows North Chicago, with the help of the county, the county's sort of our facilitator, to get this moving and get this flushed out, and hopefully get it completed the next, we have to get it completed by September 14th because the money sunsets by then, so we have to get this done.
September next year, 14th.
14th, yeah.
It sunset.
That's it.
Thank you, Alderman Moizio. A new business recommended actions by Corporation Council. Item A, approved payroll dated July 15th, 2013, in the amount of $1,356,878.26. Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Newsome. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Passes, Your Honor.
Item B, approved bills dated July 15th, 2013, in the amount of $1,506,024.82. Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Newsome. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Item C, approve block parties. Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Tempest. All's in favor?
Aye.
Item D, Treasury report for June 2013. Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Newsome. All's in favor?
Aye.
Item E, motion to approve the use of parking lot D, southwest corner of Sheridan Road at Clayton Street, and parking lot zero, northwest corner of Sheridan Road and Clayton Street, by the Waukegan Cares Foundation for its Suicide Awareness Day on September 21st, 2013, as per our outdoor special event application. Motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman Rivera. Roll call, please. It's a use of property. Yeah. Roll call, please.
Alderman Valco.
That's not money, is it?
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Item F, motion to permit the sale and service of outdoor beverages at the Steiner,
alcoholic beverages at the Steiner Pavilion at the Waukegan Lakefront on August 3rd, 2013, only pursuant to the property issued Class H temporary liquor license. Such license to be applied for the Waukegan Arts District for the concerts sponsored jointly by the City of Waukegan, Waukegan Arts Council, Mosquito Gallery, and Tighthead Brewery, and including a waiver of the $20 non-resident parking fee, all for the date of August 3rd, 2013, from 2:00 PM to 9:00 PM only. What you're doing here is you're waiving the fee for people who take advantage of participating in this event to not pay the parking fee for that day. Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Conkin. Roll call, please.
Party man.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Passes, Your Honor.
Alderman Tom, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman Valco.
Thank you, sir, I'm going to make it quick tonight. I want to thank everybody that contacted me on the assault weapons ban, whether I met with you in person, you called me, you emailed me, or you wrote me a letter. Very well done. Everything was, everything was presented logically. Everything was presented logically by the people that contacted me. And this is one of those, beside the River Road project from last time, this is one of those where there was dozen people, dozens of people that I met with or contacted me, so thank you very much.
Alderman Rivera.
I also want to congratulate the people that wrote emails in regards to the gun laws. I appreciate the input. I've never held a gun ever in my life, but I do respect the Constitution of the United States and the right to bear arms, so I appreciate the information that everyone sent me. I also want to congratulate the administration of St. Demetrius Greek Orthodox Church in Oak Plain, on Oak Plain Road, with their success in Greek Fest. It was a huge success. I think they had record crowds each day, so I want to congratulate Demetrius, and it's great that, and I want to also thank the city staff for working, you know, with St. Demetrius, and I believe we've had a wonderful relationship throughout the years, so thank you very much.
Alderman Cunningham.
I have two things that I'm going to need to talk about tonight. One of them is being the Midwest Generation Plant. We heard tonight that there were some concerns that the Midwest Generation Plant is, have not revealed some of their plans, or what direction they're going to be going in, in the future. Mayor, I think it is time that we, from a city standpoint, at least get some details as to what their plans are, what direction they're going in, at least we can be able to answer some of the questions or concerns that have been addressed here. And being a, not only just a member, but a board member of the Lake County NAACP, I too was somewhat startled and couldn't believe some of the statistics that surrounded some of the illness that consists of some of the things that's going on. So as an alderman and an officer of this city, I'm asking that we get some type of information as to what their plans on from an improvement of the plant, that's been, the dates escape me right now, but I think with the information that's been provided to me personally, and I would recommend aldermen to sit down and get some of the information that's been disseminated by the Sierra Club and a host of others, so we can at least see exactly how this fits into our plans. But I'm very, very concerned, and the reason I say that is from an asthma aspects, I have a cousin right now, Ms. Hill, who is a severe asthma patient. Matter of fact, she just got out of the hospital about two, two or three weeks ago. Living and growing up in the city of Waukegan her entire life, I want to be assured that not just Midwest Generation, but other plants such as this, did not cause or contribute to her asthma. So I think it is very important, particularly since our area has been listed as one of the worst areas on the North Shore. It is that time now. Tonight, I do apologize that I was tardy, was not able to meet the Public Safety Committee. I know we were supposed to meet on Friday, but I think it was scheduled to Monday. I know the chairman tried, it's hard to get all those here on time. But I must speak out and speak against, firmly speak against. And I'm going to tell you my frustration with this so-called bear arms, this so-called I got to have a gun in my hand. See, I don't mind you having a gun in your hand, I don't mind that being a sport that you enjoy, just as I enjoy basketball, football, track, and other sports. I think it is respected. I definitely am not looking to infringe on the constitutional rights of any American, particularly those that live in the city of Waukegan. But I ask you today, each and every last one of you, when it's time for that guy who's selling these drugs, these guns, these powerful weapons out of the back of their cars, where is the NRA? Where is the person who is going to go to that parent and say, "You know what, we want to ban with you to stop this illegal gun selling"? Not the one at Smoking Guns, where they do the right thing, they abide by the laws. We're talking about that individual who sits in the back of his trunk, sell these guns to these bankers, or people who are killing innocent kids. I want you to stand up here and do the same thing with me. That's what I'm looking for you to do. I'm not a gun user, never have and never will be, to be honest, it just doesn't thrill me. But if that's what you do, so be it. Now you ask this council to bear with you and to stand with you on an issue you think is right. Now I'm asking you to stand with me. There are people out there who are selling guns, the back of their trucks illegally. Now maybe you don't know who they are, but I guarantee the NRA does. I guarantee you, you can say what you want to say to me. I'm only telling you my thoughts of it. When I have to go to parents, innocent babies, now they might not live in your neighborhood, they live in mine's. You see them on the, you hear them on the radio, on the news every day. Let's us bear together, not apart, not you against me, but together. Let's find and seek out these individuals who are doing this, and let's get rid of them so we all can live in harmony. But as we stand today, if that's the only way, and I repeat the only way, that we can say this madness will stop, then I'm going to stand with that. Because I believe that you do the right things, as my grandfather did, my uncles, who are avid, they hunt. But for these people, that 2% or 3% or wherever they may be, we must seek them out, hunt them down, and get rid of them because they are destroying the community where I live Now if you can't see my point, then don't ask me to see yours. But if I'm willing to open, be open to your point, and your views, and how you feel about this matter, I'm demanding you do the same thing for me. And if it's not for Sam Cunningham, look at the young boy who was getting ready to go to college on a scholarship and got killed by an illegal gun. Now you say that doesn't mean anything. The police can handle that. I say if we band together and put the same type of energy that we have put in eight to zero, I guarantee you, we can find those individuals, so the young lady up here don't have to worry about that. But as it stands today, we do. That 2% or 3% is destroying, is destroying the community that I know. And until it stops, then we can no longer live in harmony. That is my position, I respect what yours is, matter of fact, I encourage it. That is your right. But please, please, don't ever tell me that it is not my right to give my opinion. It is only my opinion. At the end of the day, we have nine aldermen up here, and they will vote their conscience what they think is in the best interest of this community. And obviously, eight, and I don't know how I'm going to get on record because I wasn't here, but I do need to be on record that I am voting no. And that is it. Thank you for listening, I respect your opinion, good luck, God bless.
Alderman Conkin.
Thank you. I'm going to start with the wonderful crowd, this past weekend, great activities downtown Waukegan. I went to the scooping unplugged, Scoop Unplugged, and it was a wonderful time, a lot of people, a lot of cars. Nothing really seemed to get out of hand, there were a few people that got pulled over And, but I think as overall, everybody had a good time. Now I have to agree with Alderman Valco, everyone that had contacted me about this gun and weapons ordinance did so very respectfully. I also agree, and I think most of the people that spoke here do, with you, Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Cunningham, that there are people out there doing things illegally that need to be addressed. However, restricting the rights of law-abiding citizens is not the way to do it. The people that have come here and spoke for, against the assault weapons ban do so because they are law-abiding citizens. You mentioned the sport, shooting and hunting. That's our wonderful sidelines for the shooting and, but the Second Amendment, the right to keep and bear arms, has nothing to do with shooting and hunting. Unfortunately, most people don't really understand the Second Amendment. It was placed there by our founding fathers to make sure that the citizens had the ability to stand up to their own government. That's the reason it was put there. We have been very fortunate in these last two hundred years that it's never had to happen, and I hope it never does. But you cannot restrict the rights of law-abiding citizens to protect themselves, whether they're in their homes or out on the street. They have that right. Thank you very much. I'm done.
Alderman Moiseo.
Guns, guns, guns. People that contacted me, I sort of acquitted it that this issue would be like us taking on same-sex marriage or immigration. It's far too big of an animal for a local city council, in my opinion, to be dealing with. But along those lines, I think maybe what this country needs to do is maybe give up the war on drugs because that hadn't worked, and put a war on gun crimes, not gun ownership. There's a difference. Most of the people that came before us or contacted us are responsible gun owners. That's not the problem. It's like anything else in life. It's the small percentage of people that are not responsible, the criminals. We got a lot of people in our jails on petty drug offenses. There are nonviolent people that are taking up cells, overcrowding prisons, overcrowding jails, that we should be putting people that commit crimes with guns, put them in jail. That, to me, is where the focus needs to be. The focus needs to be a war on gun crimes, not gun laws, not gun ownership, gun crimes. Because the Second Amendment has opened that gate up. That ain't coming back. As I say, that horse has left the barn, as far as I'm concerned, on, on gun ownership. That's, you're not getting that back. That's a, it's a waste of time to debate it. So you have to shift your focus and go after gun crimes. One thing that comes to mind was Plaxico Burris, the New York Giants wide receiver, who had a gun on him in a nightclub in New York and shot himself in the foot, and he went to prison for two years. Do I think that's right? No. That wasn't really a crime, but in, in my mind, New York has probably gone overboard on that. But I think he probably learned his lesson. He went to, he basically ruined his career, went to jail for two years. We need to focus on gun crimes, not gun ownership. If you commit a crime with a gun, you need to go to jail. Now, I think that probably is on the books, but what does the judge do when the prison is overcrowded with nonviolent offenders? They don't have a choice. So we need to get a, a shift in focus on how we think about things. I mean, Chicago's on the national, all the time about the problems they have. And they have some of the strictest gun laws in America. It doesn't seem to help, does it? We need a focus on gun crimes, not gun ownership. Thank you.
Alderman Beedling.
I'd like to thank Dan Moran from the New Sun for the really nice article he wrote about our retired K-9 Matt and Matt's handler, Officer Mahoney. Beautifully written story. It really put a nice face on it. Like I said the last time, we don't, we don't, it didn't seem like we were gonna acknowledge that this, this dog work for the city of Waukegan. And nice job, Dan. I appreciate that. Regarding pollution, the Sierra Club, they don't like any kind of energy, is the truth. They're against coal, they're against oil, they're against gas, they're even against nuclear power. They're all about wind turbines and solar panels. Well, I do a lot of reading myself. The efficiency rating of solar panels is eleven percent. Wind turbines is seventeen percent. They have a thing what they call nameplate capacity, which the really huge ones that are four hundred fifty feet tall, three megawatts, well, they actually produce about seventeen percent of that because the wind doesn't blow reliably. Asthma, look it up on the internet. There are no known causes of asthma. I grew up in North Chicago. This plant over here in Waukegan, I don't believe they even had scrubbers on it in the sixties. We had leaded gasoline, no catalytic converters on the cars, asbestos brake shoes. Where do you suppose all that stuff went? In the street, in the air. We breathed it in, all of us. I, I can't say that I knew anyone in, in, when I grew up that was an asthmatic. So how all of a sudden, it's shooting up? All these people have asthma. Maybe they should look in their grocery basket. Maybe that might be the source of it. These are good-paying jobs over here. They'll also tell you that Waukegan doesn't get its power from Midwest Generation. That may be true. Where do we get our power from? Some other community that perhaps has a coal-fired generating station? What happens when they want to shut that one down? Wind turbines are a hundred-year-old technology that just doesn't work because man hasn't invented a super battery for a super cheap price that everybody can afford to store the electricity, because most of the time the wind's blowing when we don't need it. Wind turbines and solar panels are not a replacement for base load power. Those plants still have to be up, burning the coal, because when the wind stops blowing, they gotta keep the voltage up. Those are the questions I'd like answered from these people. You know, a few asthmatics out here, that's unfair. We need reliable, cheap energy in this country. If we want to be like Europe, we're gonna lose all of our business here. German companies right now, they pay double the rates of anywhere else in Europe. Their companies are perhaps looking to come to the United States because we still have cheap electricity here, in spite of all the mistakes that we've made, doubling down on all this unreliable energy. So I suggest we start supporting our own here. Let's do the right thing. Let's start extracting our net, our own natural resources. Let's put some people back to work in this country. Bike paths? Our roads are crumbling. Our bridges are crumbling. Wind turbines, solar panels, energy companies, tens of billions of dollars wasted. How many, how many D and F rated bridges do we have in this country? These companies have all gone bankrupt, and this administration has wasted tens of billions of dollars in all this nonsense. We need to fix our roads and bridges in this country. That puts people back to work. We don't need to be spending four hundred fifty thousand dollars for every new green energy job created. That's my rant for today. Thank you.
Alderman Newsome. Alderman Tempest.
I'll pass.
Alderman May.
Thank you. I just want to address Alderman Cunningham on the Midwest Generation as far as their plan for the future. Mark Nagel is the name of the plant manager down there. As you guys know, it's in the Seventh Ward. He's very forthcoming. I probably talk to him on a monthly basis. I think Alderman Tempest went down recently for a tour of the plant. He's always, okay, so have others. He's always, always open. They haven't publicized an exit strategy because there isn't one. They plan on staying in business. I, we can discuss the economics of it. I don't, you know what I'm saying, but right now, the company line is that they do intend to install the scrubbers by their extension date and continue to produce energy. So I'm just putting that out there. As far as assault weapons ban, it's, it's patchwork legislation. I think it's ineffective and it's, I think a lot of communities are wasting their time talking about it. My next item is the beach. We had thousands of people probably at Waukegan Beach this weekend. It was fabulous. A lot of out-of-towners come to our beautiful beach. If you haven't been to Waukegan Beach on a summer weekend, I really encourage, and I encourage all the Aldermen to walk to North Beach. Take that long walk through the sand and check out what's happening on North Beach. It's unbelievable. We did have some Waukegan's finest out there this weekend. I was really appreciative for that. They were out there on the ATVs talking to people about dogs, bottles, littering, alcohol, really helping us make it a family-friendly destination. And so I really, once again, thanks go out to the neighborhood policing unit. We're the, we're the patrol out there this weekend. And I do know that they did issue some tickets. So they're serious. You know, follow the rules and enjoy our beach. Keep it safe for everyone. We also participated, David Motley and I participated in a large debris cleanup this week. We had a lot of tires and steel scrap on our beach, so we got out there and removed a lot of it. We weren't able to get some of the big semi tires out, so we made a call to Midwest Jen, and they came out the next day, and they picked up about five tires. They're coming out later this week to pick up the steel scraps. So they allow us to walk on their property to the end of the beach. If you go to North Pier and walk all the way to Midwest Jen and back, you can get a three-mile walk-in on sand. So I encourage everyone to do so. And Fist, our contract with Fist is working out very well. They're doing a great job with the litter pickup. So I want to end, also related to the beach is about, I want to talk about and commend the Summer Saturday Concert Series, which is put on by the Waukegan Arts District, who applied for the special liquor license tonight, not to be confused with the Waukegan Arts Council. They're two different entities. The Waukegan Arts District is a venture, nonprofit. Two young ladies in the city of Waukegan put their heart and soul into programming these summer concerts out of the goodness of their heart. Jen Moore and Amy Ortiz have put on these series, promoting it, and they're just citizens doing it because they love their city and they want to promote our lakefront. So I'm glad you got the license for this big event, and thank you so much for everything you're doing down there. I know there's a lot of other people involved, so I apologize. We'll call them out next time, but thank you. And that's all I have.
Hold, one second. For those of you who don't know, last Friday, we swore in six new police officers. We, we have filed for another cops grant, and if I have my way, we'll get another six more. So we are making progress. Hopefully, we're gonna get this, the road, the infrastructure repaired. We're working diligently. The Aldermen have been phenomenal with me and with this administration to get things done, and I can guarantee you, Waukegan is gonna enter a new era with these Aldermen. So thank you very much. Motion adjourned by Alderman Beedling, second by Alderman Cunningham. All's in favor?
Aye.
Adjourned.